All right, welcome back, everybody. That was a fun little graphic that Cassie made. We had to use it.
Cannot use that.
Welcome back to the Holler Hour Tuesdays, Thursdays, 2:00 PM, talking about all the nonsense that's going on. As a reminder, this is where we're supposed to hear from you guys. So if you want to holler at us about anything, message us either on Facebook or Twitter, we'll see it. You can hop in with us. Today, we're going to be talking to Stephanie Isaacs, who is in Shelbyville, and she won a race in a rural part of the state, and she's going to tell us how she did that. Speaking of rural parts of the state, we have hollers all over the place, so follow all of the hollers. And now that all the campaigns are done, give money to Georgia, but also we could use your help here. A few bucks a month goes a long way. It's how we grow here, so that really helps. Cassie, how you doing today?
Doing pretty well. I'm just taking it easy and just trying to take the news as it comes, as always.
So much news. Let's start with the fact that we do have a new president. Biden won. What they're trying to
We just gotta keep
Saying it over and over again. Biden did win, even though we have all of these Republicans throughout the state, joining the fight against democracy. Bill Lee said, "It's not yet clear what the outcome is." Archer Blackburn said, "It's a shame we have to fight for a fair election and the greatest democracy in the world, but we do."
Again, fighting against her.
Agardee says, "The lack of transparency and irregularities are a cause of great concern." Obviously, there's still no evidence of any of this, and they are all full of shit. And but the fight goes on, and you know, they seem ready to take this all the way. I mean, you know, up and down the their their party, they're all taking this to the nth degree. This is from Rick Williams, who I do the Fox Nashville show with. He is saying, "To all my friends that support President Trump and pushing this Stop the Steal rally on Saturday." Fun fact about Rick, off the air during the show, he was all but conceding that Biden had won, but yet here he is Atuating this nonsense.
It's politically advantageous.
And he also used to be a Democrat Democratic operative back when Democrats had the power. So it's really just
Opportunistic.
Opportunistic.
Like Lindsey Graham.
Exactly right, Lindsey Graham. Let's talk about him in a second. So this graphic you made, the lost cause of the Confederacy II refusing to accept the election results. That's exactly what's going on. These people Are fighting a lost cause, but they're good at fighting lost causes. This is what they do.
Yep, it's it's a way for them to earn a lot of money. It's a way for them to kind of have their cake and eat it too, in terms of, you know, ensuring that they still have support from their base, but knowing behind the scenes That, you know, that they're, you know, doing this thing. So I and that's it's it's just It's it's just they're just playing the game to the nth degree. It's just all a game. It's all a grift. It's, you know, politically advantageous for them, but it's terrible for democracy.
It absolutely is a grift. Stop the Steal is stealing, as we said this week. He is pocketing money. The longer this goes on, the more he can milk his supporters for their money. He's everything under $8,000 goes right to him. You know, it's not just us saying this. This is what's going on. They send like 16 messages a day to their followers asking for money. So that's what's going on here. It's a grift, and they're they're taking advantage of people, but they actually are convincing a lot of people with this group, Which is really ugly. And then, of course, Fox News isn't following him down the rabbit hole, so he's telling people to switch to OAN, which is his new favorite news site. And this is what they're showing. They're showing that he had 410 electoral votes to Biden's 128. So no wonder he likes them.
It's so delusional.
In their alternate universe. So let's go ahead and talk a little bit about Lindsey Graham. I think people know that Lindsey Graham was caught Calling the Secretary of State in Georgia to pressure him essentially to throw out legally cast ballots, which He was sort of pointing to, I guess, the signature matching was the main reason that he was saying that they should do this. But then he was he was caught. And Raffensperger, who is the Secretary of State and is a Republican, he said, "He took it in a direction I didn't expect it to go," and there were staffers on the call. So Now we have people calling for investigations, including the former Ethics Office of Government Ethics Director, Walter Schaub is calling for that. And then Lindsey Graham said that he had called other Secretaries of State, but He has not. He has not. So the Arizona Secretary of State said, "Actually, no, we didn't talk. I have not spoken to Secretary Grant, to Senator Graham." And he just seems completely busted by this whole thing. Let's go ahead and see if we can find
Let's hope it actually sticks. We gotta have like some ramifications for this sort of behavior.
Right. This is the kind of thing that should be investigated. If anyone else was doing this, this would be a crime.
There's checks and balances. When it comes to mail-in balloting, I don't know exactly where the checks and balances are. Are they good enough? And that's what I was talking to Secretary of State.
Yes.
We move forward as we use mail-in balloting in the future. Do we have the redundancies redundancies that we need?
I mean, obviously, that's not what he was saying.
Oh, it's all in good faith.
If you're saying to the Republican Secretary of State, "Can we throw out ballots in a county when signatures don't match?" That is not checks and balances. That is that is throwing out legal votes. That is anti-democracy. That is shocking, frankly. And it's something that they should be punished for and at least investigated. And people need to realize that they just don't want people to vote, right?
That's yeah, I mean, exactly. And and it's concerning to me that Biden has signaled that he just wants to turn a new leaf once his administration begins in terms of Letting things like this fly and everything with Trump, like just letting all of that, like everything that he's done fly. And I understand like the impulse of wanting to do that, but we're just going to end up in the same situation again. It's why these people stick around, like from Iran-Contra, from the scandals, you know, everything that happened with Afghanistan and the war in Iraq. I mean, the completely the war crimes that we committed there. These people stick around because there are never ramifications for this sort of thing. And whenever like someone that's a little bit, you know, like Obama gets into office or whoever Biden's coming into office, they're just like, "Let's turn a new leaf. Let's just, you know, let's move past this." No, these people like it will keep happening. These people will, if they never suffer any consequences for this, then We're just going to continue. We're going to have the same problem again in like 10 years.
This is actually what Sarah Kenzie was talking about last week. For those who joined us for that interview, she is great. She hosts a podcast called Gaslit Nation. She's been calling this right from the beginning. And and she said the same thing, that it's all about incentives. And if Nobody gets punished when these things happen, they're going to keep happening. That's just how it's going to happen. So
Right.
You know, people, there has to be accountability. It was the same thing with the stock market crash, with the economy, when the economy crashed, when All those loans were being given out, nobody went to jail, nobody was punished.
Right.
So you know, that's, I agree with you. We need to make sure that there's accountability. It's just hard to actually envision that happening. And that's the tough part. So, you know, then you look at, okay, what is their plan here? And this was Steve Bannon telling us what their plan is on his podcast this week. Now, I want to preface this by saying, we don't believe that it can actually happen.
Yeah.
But we haven't believed a lot of things could happen that have happened. You know, I do want people to at least be aware of what they're trying to do here.
It's obvious they're trying to steal this. People say they stole it. No, they didn't stole it. They're trying to steal it. They're not going to be able to steal it because on the 14th of December, there's not going to be enough certified electoral votes, not going to be enough states to certify it. And don't believe the fake news of all the of all the of all the states. Oh, we're just not going to do it. If the vote can't be certified, We don't need the legislature coming to put their own own electors up. It's just not certified. You go to a contingent election. And he'll win in the he'll win in the in the House.
So that's what he's that's what they're getting at here.
Yeah.
They're getting at that it's going to be a not enough states certify the election, and then it goes to the House of Representatives. And in the House of Representatives, each state gets one vote. And Republicans, even though Democrats control the House and have more reps in the House, a lot of those reps are in the same state. So Republicans actually control more states. And if it went to a vote in the House, Biden would lose. Now, we're again, not going to happen. Like, we're not saying this is going to happen. We're just saying this is their plan. Like, a lot of people are talking about the state legislatures assigning That's they don't need that for this. If they just keep enough states from certifying, then it goes to the House, and then this is what would happen. So how do they keep States from certifying? Well, the way they do that, or try to do that, is just by saying fraud, 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 you know, kicking dirt on the election, Trying to make it so that not enough people have confidence in this, saying that you can't certify these results. We didn't see these ballots being counted, dead people voted, all that stuff. And and that's what they're trying to do. Again, they have no evidence of this. But like a little thing here, a little thing there, you know, there was a thing in Georgia where I guess someone didn't upload a hard drive, and they just found 2,000 votes. You know, 800 were Biden, 1,600 were to Trump, but stuff like that just isn't good. When, you know, when these accusations are being made. Obviously, there's human error all over the place. You're counting This many votes. It's going to happen 150.
In every election, like you'd have to you'd have to go back and audit every election that's ever happened, every presidential, like, you know, every massive race has ever happened in the history of this country. Because, you know, and that's why it's math, you know, in terms of like having, you know, if you're winning by this much, then there's no way that, you know, this, you know, Trump in this case could make up that many votes. In every single election, there are little mistakes here and there. You'd have to go back and audit every single election. The election that Trump won, you want to go back and audit that? Like, no.
You know, races and the House.
Yeah, any big race.
It's always going to happen, but when they are making this effort to attack our democracy.
Right.
It just amplifies everything, and it makes it so that, you know, Really, the net result here is that millions and millions of Americans aren't going to believe that we have free and fair elections. And
Right.
Who knows how that's going to affect things going forward? Frankly, I think that there's an argument to be made That it may hurt them even as soon as January in this Georgia runoff, if they're telling everybody, oh, it's Going to be stolen, and the Democrats have rigged it, and, you know, all that stuff. Like, why are there people going to make the effort to go out and vote again?
You know, I mean, it's true. Yeah, completely. And and watch if if, you know, one or both of their candidates win, which hopefully they don't. But if one or both of their candidates win in the Georgia race, it'll be really funny, not it'll be really funny to see that quick turnaround of them, you know, Legitimizing the race that they were just demonizing, the same process.
Right. It's one of those things where like, you know, no matter what the result is, they're going to say it justifies what they believe. So, you know, that's what to watch for. And then I just wanted to play this one other clip. This is, you know, the dead voters in Georgia. There were four of them that they supposedly found. They have now, the reporters in Georgia went and found three of them so far. And this is one of them, and I just thought she was great.
President of the United States was accusing you of voter fraud.
Oh, I know it. And and I knew it wasn't fraud.
Is there anything you'd like people to know about your husband? Because I'm sure he's dearly missed.
Best man I ever knew. Best best one to me. I couldn't have had a better one.
That is who these people are accusing of fraud, having reporters show up at their door, reminding her of her dead husband. You know, like so insensitive and like so desperate that this is the position they're putting in people in. In Nevada, it was military families. You know, this is really some low, low stuff going on, and people who are contributing to this, I would say they should be ashamed of themselves, but shame doesn't seem to be a thing.
They need consequences. I'm just going to keep railing on that. They need actual political consequences for this. It's ridiculous.
Right. And that political consequences have to come from the people. And as long as
And from Democrats.
But but in a state, you know, in certain states, Democrats don't have the power to do anything. Like in our state, for instance, you know, Republicans are going along with this. Democrats don't have the power to do anything. It has to be Republican voters who, you know, say, you know what, this is too far. I'm ashamed of this, and here are some consequences. This is just not happening. Or even primary challengers who say, "That guy went along, showed us his true colors. You know, I'm a Republican who's actually going to stand for democracy." Where are those people? Where are they?
Yeah, I mean, I just don't see that happening until like, I agree that people need to be leading on this, but I think that, you know, Republican Voters, it's just not, it's not going to come from them. Like, there needs to actually be some, like, really big backlash from people that do have are in positions of power, like from Democrats. Obviously, it's really hard here in Tennessee. But just so that we don't let these people, the people that are in a position of power where they can do something about this, to not let these people off the hook. So, yeah, I mean, obviously, I wish that it would come from Republican voters. I just don't see that happening.
Well, the reason I say that is because that's from what I've seen in the 18 to 24 months that we've been doing the hollers, that that's really the only time that anything changes. Like when David Byrd had to be pushed down out of his chairmanship, that was because Republican voters were starting to get disgusted. The accident of losing his speakership was because Republican voters were starting to get disgusted.
There was a lot of like pressure from, you know, from us, well, from you when you were doing this. And then, like, you know, activist groups, activist organizations. So I agree that it definitely can come from people. But I'm just hoping to see it from Democratic.
I guess I'm just saying, like, I'm calling on, you know, Republicans out there, or your Republican friends, or your Republican neighbors To like notice that this is really, really not okay, what's happening, that we are inches away here from Something that essentially means the end of America as we know it. And that is
I agree.
Probably like if the bulwarks weren't there to stop this from happening, what they are trying to do, You we would not be a democracy anymore overnight, you know, and we would not be able to claim to be, you know, and and so what they are doing Is helpful to our enemies. It's the opposite of patriotism. And anybody who actually cares about what this country is supposed to stand for, regardless of party, should be saying something about this People that are signed on to it. Now, not every Republican signed on to that letter, probably for political reasons, but Republicans in the State House, like Sam Witson, Brian Kelsey.
Yeah.
Gardenhire even come come to mind, you know, granted, these are people that are in swing districts that probably are afraid Of, you know, the political ramifications, but who knows? Maybe there are a couple of them that felt ugly doing it. You know, those are the people that need to stand up and say, "Stop." Because this is, this is not just about Medicaid expansion. This is not just about, you know, Whatever, all these really important issues, by the way, but this is like American democracy. This is America as we know it, like. And and it would get really ugly really quickly if if this happened. And it may get ugly quickly if it doesn't happen because of what they've done On the other side, all these people that actually believe what they're saying. It seems like things are going to get even more turbulent before they get better. And I guess to help us understand some of what's going on, especially in rural America, why don't we bring in our guest? I'll let you do it.
Oh, sure, sure. So welcome, Stephanie. Stephanie just won her race in Shelbyville for City Council, and it's just an amazing success. How's it going, Stephanie?
It's going good, going good. Been homeschooling my kids today.
Yeah, yeah, it's that's a story for a lot of people right now, just trying to lay low.
You have Stephanie, first of all?
I have two. I have a 10-year-old and a six-year-old. They keep me busy.
You tell us about your race. You won a race in Shelbyville, right? Tell what is your race, first of all, so people know?
City Council Ward Five. We did a bunch of door knocking Every weekend from the time that I started running, we door knocked. We, you know, and I know there's a pandemic going on, but we Wore masks. We were safe. We left Things at people's doors, you know.
Yeah.
So if we couldn't talk to them, they knew who I was. And people, honestly, a lot of people knew who I was anyway because of my work with the Bedford County Listening Project.
What is the Bedford County Listening Project?
We are a renter rights group in Shelbyville. So back in 2017, there was like a Like a White Lives Matter rally. And we wanted people to, we wanted to know like why they thought Shelbyville was a good place to come for that. So we started door knocking to get to know people, to see, you know, what problems people were having. And substandard housing was so prominent and so bad. So for the past two or three years, you know, we've been door knocking, trying to get renter rights. We tried to pass Urota account, like on the county level, but they Turned it down. The city council wasn't listening. I didn't even know who my city council person was because she wouldn't respond to anything. So I said, "Okay, well, if y'all aren't going to listen, if y'all aren't going to do anything, then don't take it over."
And it was a nonpartisan race that you won? And do you think that your work for renters' rights, it helped people know who you were and sort of Allowed you to be, I guess, a fairly progressive person running in a probably not that progressive district and and when? Is that is that kind of how you feel that all went?
I definitely feel like, I mean, door knocking either way helped because A lot of people said, "Hey, nobody's ever door knocked on my door before. I've never talked to a politician. This has never, you know, been a thing." So I think that in itself helped tremendously. But definitely, I don't think I could have Won like I did had I not already been in the community. Because people, you can't just show up. You can't just show up and say, "Hey, vote for me" without people knowing you. At least around here, you can't do that.
Yeah, yeah. What are, why do you think that, I mean, you've been a part of this group for a couple of years, and it seems like, you know, it's something that people Really need, you know, just having better and stronger renters' rights. But what do you think really Like, why do you think that really like set you over the top? And what what about renters' rights? Like, why does that resonate so deeply with people in your area?
There has been like a crisis here long before COVID hit. People are struggling. People, you know, there's high rent prices, yet people don't have plumbing, and they have kids. They have bedbugs. They're falling through their floors. Like, your home is like Your your base, you know, if your home life is messed up, that affects how you are in every other part of your life. If you have to go to school, if you have to go to your job, if you, you know, That matters.
Yeah.
Do you think, Stephanie, that If you look people in the eye and you focus on the things that matter, like we're such a hyper partisan environment in this country, and especially in our state, Do you think that people can see past partisanship when you focus on issues like that? Or, you know, is that a special instance because it was a nonpartisan race? Like, is is there a lesson to be learned from your race in your eyes?
I think it matters. You know, Even though it was Sorry, mom. It's like it does matter, like getting to know people and what affects them and what's going on in their lives. I think that does have a lot to do with it. And believe me, even though my race was nonpartisan, because this is an election year, it amps everything up, and I had people asking me about that. And I mean, I told them it was nonpartisan, but also I told them, and I do 100% believe this, that people get so caught up on political parties That other folks in our community, our neighbors, struggle And don't get the help that they need because everybody's so angry and bent up on what your, you know, political affiliation is.
And do you end up telling them what your political affiliation is anyway when they press you?
I mean.
Or do you just say no?
I mean, usually, that's enough. I tell them, "Look, I'm and I'm not, I'm not a Republican. I'm not a Democrat."
Okay. You consider yourself an independent, basically?
Yeah.
Okay.
Don't get me wrong. I'm probably a little more leftist than a lot of people, but
Yeah, that's all. It's all good.
In the middle of my running, we had, there were Like KKK business cards left on Joe Biden's signs. And so in the middle of my campaign, like With with like Shelbyville loves, we threw like an anti-Clan rally.
I remember that.
Yeah.
And people showed up and counter protested. Your counter protest, right?
Right. Oh, my gosh.
What are the issues that Shelbyville City Council is dealing with right now? Is there anything going on that is of note?
They are in the middle of hiring a new city manager. The former city manager, Shanna Boyett, she left to go work for the county. And so in which I'm not, I haven't been sworn in yet, you know, but a lot of what they're doing right now is trying to find a new city manager.
We're constantly talking about bench building in this state, and, you know, bench building starts with winning races like the one You won, and then, you know, having people like yourself hopefully aspire to do other other things also. So, you know, it's it's great that you got a leg up. It's great that you You know, ran and talked to people and can sort of become a conduit between, you know, future races and and the people. And And so I think it's great that you did that, and it's nice to hear from somebody who went through that, because there's not a lot of winners around here That we can talk to on this on this show.
Well, I always said that if I ever ran for any kind of office that like, so I live in public housing, right? So I went and door knocked. Everybody that lived in public housing helped register them to vote and then marched them out, and people that needed rides, people that needed reminders Had like right in front of my house is a school that is a like where everybody goes to vote. And so, you know, we gave rides. We helped people get there. And I always said I was going to do that because nobody ever does that. Nobody comes over here and knocks our doors.
How many votes did you need? Oh, sorry.
So I won by 59 votes.
Wow.
Think that It was my people in public housing.
Yeah. Was that was turnout a lot? I mean, I don't know if you have numbers on this, but was turnout a lot higher In your area? I mean, I'm sure it was, but do you have any numbers or any sense of like how much higher turnout was from your area of public housing and other renters than it usually is?
I don't have the exact numbers right now, but it was a little higher. There were more people registered to vote. It was just really great, just the amount of people that I talked to personally that were like, wow, like Nobody ever like tells us our voices matter. Like, nobody ever says that, you know, we should go vote. In fact, one of the rules at public housing is that you can't even have political signs in your yard.
Right.
So, I mean.
What would you say to someone who wanted to like replicate what you've done, what you did in your success? You know, in somewhere else in the state, maybe another rural area, maybe not, like, what do you, what advice would you give someone else who wanted to run for their own city council?
I would say the first, like, get out in your community and know what's going on, know what problems are going on, introduce yourself. See who's already doing things, you know, get involved. Let people know who you are. And then, when you decide to run, you know, door knock, like people You know, first, when you like do it, you have to get 25 signatures of people that are registered to vote to even get on the ballot. So first, I went through knock doors. So that was my first contact with everybody. My second contact was with a palm card, and I said, "Hey, I remember you. You signed my petition. I'm on the ballot now. You know, Here's my palm card. This is what I'm about. Will you vote for me?" And then maybe you call them. Maybe you go by again for like a get out the vote type thing. You offer them rides. You offer them a way to get there. Because a lot of people aren't going to just watch you on Facebook.
Right.
In fact, a lot of my following on my Facebook was not from like renters and not from people around here. You know, they got to know me because I showed up at their doors and because I was sending them, I was, you know, calling them and doing things of that nature.
Did you was there like, you know, do you raise money for a city council race? Is it like, is there is there advertising going on, or is it more just face to face? And, you know, how does that work?
I did raise a little bit of money just so I could print out some like, I did have yard signs, and I like I showed I did have like some palm cards and some door hanging. That's all we did. And we passed them out, and door knocking was the majority of it.
Yeah.
Well, congratulations to you, Stephanie. We're appreciative of the work that you're doing. Love to just stay in touch with you and check in here and there. It's definitely inspiring to hear, you know, some old school politicking actually got this done. And especially when it comes down to that few votes, it must be so rewarding to actually have it pay off and feel like, oh, that extra work I did might have done it.
I was I was in shock the election night.
That's amazing.
Good luck. Well, and give them hell on the city council. Cassie, if you have any last words?
I just have one more question. So since renters' rights is your your biggest issue, which I just, I think is phenomenal. We need we need more of that. What what would be your top one or two solutions that you'd want to push for in your city council once you guys have your first session? Or your meetings start, you know, start going?
Something short term we have going on right now is we want The codes department here to put like what substandard codes are on their website. And to put like the steps on how to contact codes and how to get, you know, help like with the steps to do that, because that's not on the website right now. A longer term goal would be like, maybe we have a renter committee. Maybe we work towards having like a renter bill of rights. Maybe we work towards having like a renter bill of rights or something that where we can help folks and get in, you know, and, and do something because people are struggling and people need something.
That's fantastic.
Absolutely. Stephanie, thanks for joining us today. Really appreciate it. Definitely stay in touch and, uh, give them hell on the council.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's just cool to hear a, a, a success story, uh, in our state. There really aren't that many of them. Partly because we just don't vote. This is our turnout. We're down over here like fourth to last. Not the red line, that's Texas. So we're even further down than that. People just don't vote and, and we got to really fix that. Uh, but we also need good people to run for office. And so it's nice to see that she got out there, did that. Yeah, at all levels, exactly. This, the bench building is so important. But she was, she was talking about failing families. That's something that Bill Lee is good at. Came out this week that there is actually now seven hundred and forty-one million dollars in Tanaf reserves intended for needy Tennessee families.
Right.
And Governor Lee has apparently no plan to spend that down. It's just such utter failure. And it's, in the middle of a pandemic, it's just hard to believe that they're not prioritizing the people that need it most.
Like, what are they even going to do with that? What can they do with that money other than just let it sit there?
No, and I think some of it actually was already forfeited back. And, uh,
Oh, my gosh.
It's just, it's just wild. And you know, they always say, well, people aren't claiming it, but like, there are things, ours is, I think, the biggest reserve in the country. So there are things that can be done with it. It can go towards subsidizing daycare, things like that. It's just absolutely horrific that they're not doing that. And meanwhile, Governor Lee is also still going out in public at fundraisers at his house, not wearing masks. He's got his mask in his pocket there. This is Hagerty and Blackburn at the same fundraiser, also not wearing masks. This is as the entire country is in the red zone and hospitals are full in Tennessee. They're just absolutely failing us and they don't seem to want to do anything about it. We just had our worst week here in Tennessee. There was a nearly eight thousand cases the other day, or yesterday, I think, with, with thirty more deaths. And, you know, other states are issuing mask mandates. People are calling for mask mandates all over the place, but he won't do it.
But it's still personal responsibility, right?
Right, personal responsibility, yes.
Yeah.
So, yeah, Joel Alex says not only is it sitting there, it's still accumulating, right?
Right.
So they don't seem to care that there are people that are really hurting throughout the state. I mean, that, there's so many different places that money could be going. Unemployment is still an issue, you know, but meanwhile, all they do is run around saying how fiscally stable we are. And, you know, taking credit for all kinds of things. Uh, just as a final clip before we get out of here, this is a nurse in South Dakota who is talking about how, uh, people are still refusing to believe that COVID is real, even as they're dying of it.
Right. Said that even now, that the hospital is being overrun with COVID patients. They come in, they're horribly ill. They're gasping for breath and yet they don't believe they have COVID?
Yeah, I think the hardest thing to watch is that people are still looking for something else and they want a magic answer. And they don't want to believe that COVID is real. And the reason I tweeted what I did is it wasn't one particular patient. It's a culmination of so many people. And their last dying words are, um, this can't be happening, it's not real.
I mean, like, think about that. They're dying of this thing and they're still saying it's not real. Like, you know, people joke and say this is a death cult that the Republican Party has become, that Trumpism has become. This is really true. I mean, that's what this is now.
That's definitional. I mean, what, what else is that?
Yeah, it's really, really terrifying, you know? She's like almost laughing because it's so surreal.
It's so absurd, like, it's just, it's unbelievable.
Right. So, you know, I don't know what more people need to hear about this thing being real. People don't want to believe it. I think with all of this stuff, what ends up happening is they get so dug in because they've denied it for so long that they can't turn back.
No, that's exactly right. I don't think that they, I, I don't know how they could exit from that sort of scenario. I mean, we're just gonna, it's, there's, I, I don't see it happening before we actually start, hopefully, you know, knock on wood, start seeing some results from these vaccines that will hopefully start getting distributed. I, I don't see that happening. So I, I, I mean, I, I again, just go back to the political consequences thing, like this, I really hope that we, you know, or Democrats, you know, can message like about this for years to come. That they were complicit, that they were like anti-science, that they were anti, you know, that hundreds of thousands of people died in this country, like, and many of them needlessly because of their negligence.
I will admit, like, at this point, you know, Biden's going to come in, he's going to have scientists and he's going to listen to the experts, but this thing is so rampant right now and
Yeah.
People are so
What are you going to do?
People are, right, people are so, you know, dug in again and refusing to, like, nobody is going, like, people in our state aren't going to tolerate shutdowns and
Right.
You know, so like really on some level, it's like, what can Biden do now? I don't know.
Point, yeah, it's like going back like to April where it's like, this is when you should have done X, Y, and Z.
Exactly, right.
And so I totally understand, yeah, I'm totally on the same page with that. Like Biden is inheriting a complete shitshow with COVID. And in terms of compliance and both from Republican leadership and from their base that they've brainwashed into thinking that this isn't real. Like, it's a terrible thing to inherit because the solutions that you try to implement are going to be followed by a, a large enough number of people to make a really, like, negative impact.
And what we do need is a mask mandate, you know, but, I mean, we see Vanderbilt says COVID death rates are twice as high in counties without mask mandates, but I don't, you know, we should do it. Like, it has to be done. It's irresponsible not to do it. But we know they're not going to follow it in the places that they need to.
Yeah.
So it's not going to be a, a panacea, I guess what I'm saying.
Yeah, I agree. And I just, I also worry just about the, you know, the vaccines. There are enough people that distrust the vaccines that are going to be coming out. Um, so we need, you know, full compliance with that. And that's something that I worry about not happening as well. But hopefully we'll cross that bridge when it comes.
On the vaccine front, a little bit of good news, there do seem to be a couple of vaccines that are showing promise. And one of them was paid for by Dolly Parton in part.
Right.
And this is what she had to say when she was asked about it today.
Read up and up. They told me that just before I went on the air that they may be asking me about that. So happy that anything I do can help somebody else. And when I donated the money to the COVID fund, I just wanted it to do good. And evidently, it is. And let's just hope we find a cure.
So, you know, that's awesome and everybody should be channeling Dolly. And if Dolly wanted to run for governor or even president, I think she would win. And so I guess, I guess I just want to end today by saying, Dolly Parton, please run for governor.
Yes.
Right?
Here first, folks.
This is our formal request to Dolly Parton to run for governor.
We gotta have Afton on to talk about this. She's like, Dolly is her hero.
Yes, Afton would lose her mind. By the way, if anyone can get her to do it, it's Afton. So
Yeah.
Afton, get Dolly to run for governor. That's what needs to happen. Uh, thank you guys for joining us here today. We'll be back on Thursday with Vincent Dixie, who is running for caucus chair for the Democrats. We had John Ray Clemens on last week. And this week we have Vincent Dixie, who is the only other hat in the race right now. Two PM. We hope you guys will join us and also feel free to ask for the link and jump in and holler with us. That's what this is for.
Yeah, good to see y'all.
Take care, everybody.